Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the May 17, 2022 meeting of the Woodbridge Board of Education to order at 7:05 PM. With a reminder to all those watching and participating remotely to kindly mute your microphones to avoid any background noise. This meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting consistent with Sections 149-153 of Connecticut Public Act 21-2. The public may attend both in person and electronically via WebEx. This meeting is being recorded, and the recording will be made available on the district website. I will now call the roll. Maria Madonick.
Present.
Sarabeth L. Street.
Present.
Jay Daya.
Present.
Present.
Jeff Hughes is not with us yet. He'll be late this evening. Mike Strambler. Erin Williamson. And I'm Lynn Piazek, the Chair. This evening, I am delighted to ask our SCASSA Student Award recipient, Abigail Sussman, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Well, it's a pleasure, everyone, to commend to you tonight two additional winners of this year's SCASSA Award, the South Central Area Superintendent's Association. And you'll see everybody who's watching, in Board Book, we have a biography of each of these two recipients. Abigail Sussman is with us tonight, and I'll start with her. But with achievements as impressive as Abigail and Ethan and their colleagues from last month, it's actually hard to condense this into just a paragraph. But for the record, the stellar attributes of Abby are so clear when you read the biography. Now, she starts, in this biography, which she wrote, by noting how she has walked a few of her younger neighbors to and from the bus stop every day, and has taken care of some neighborhood dogs. But helping her school community extends in really specific ways. She has been on Student Council, helped spread school spirit across Beecher this year. And her true passion is dance. Competing since third grade, Abigail has learned that dance requires even more dedication and commitment than anyone would have thought, right? But she's not dancing. She loves to read. Thinking of the importance of goal-setting, in 2019, she made a goal to read 100 books in nine months. And you achieve that goal. And when you thought back, you realize how much could be learned from books. And we all agree, other than dancing and reading, Abigail Sussman enjoys being around friends and family, both of which mean so much to her. Her older sister is always there for her, and she finds her friends always motivating her to keep trying. And at this transition between grades six and seven, I think it's beautiful that Abigail has ended her autobiography by writing that she can't wait to see what will happen later on in life with her friends and family beside her. I was pleased with Principal Sherman to join Abigail, her parents, and the other award recipients and their parents two weeks ago at a luncheon in Waterbury. And to see the inspiration of these young people like Abigail Sussman before you this evening is really inspirational. So I wonder if you might join me in congratulating Abby for her achievement.
Abby, I just want you to know that the people who are online are doing the virtual clap, too. We're very proud of you. And as I said at our last meeting, it always warms my heart when the SCASSA winners come to the board meetings because it's a reminder of the wonderful talent that we have, the great students that we have here in Woodbridge. And so I thank you for your contributions, and I wish you the best of luck in seventh grade. And I was delighted to read about you reading all those books and setting goals because I do that same thing. And I hope you write down what you read because it's a wonderful thing to look back on over the years. And congratulations to Mom and Dad as well because it takes everybody working together. So thank you. Moving on in the agenda to 1G correspondence. Sarabeth.
Would you like to correspond and specify that in the board book? Can you hear me?
I don't know. Could everyone in remote land hear that? Yes, I got a thumbs up, Sarabeth. Thank you. And I'm sorry, Dr. Bud, but we also did not recognize Ethan Patner, who is unable to be with us but is also a SCASSA winner. So perhaps you have a few words about Ethan this evening. Sure.
As you know Ethan Patner, and as he writes, his major interest outside of school is sports. And in school, he likes social studies, a major fan of the Celtics and Jason Tatum. He plays on a team called the Wildcats, which has players from all over southern Connecticut. He recognizes, Ethan does, that it's a challenge to balance schoolwork with practicing basketball, but he's up for that challenge. In school, he likes learning about history, especially military history. He's read various books about different wars and enjoyed them all. And he's motivated at this point and doing well in school to go to a good college, have a rewarding career. And he is appreciative of his teachers and Beecher Road School for choosing him to receive this award. Ethan can't be with us tonight, but I echo what I said last time, the sixth-grade team and the administration had quite a challenge in culling through the 45 students nominated to choose for this year. And it's a pleasure to have presented them all to you this past month and tonight. So thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Dr. Bud. And the board congratulates Ethan as well. Public comment. Is there any public comment this evening? And raise your hand. We'll call on you if there's public comment. I'm scrolling through as well, Maria. I don't see any public comment. I don't see anyone on screen that has raised their hand. So we will move on to the Board of Selectmen update and the First Selectmen proclamation. First Selectman Beth Heller, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you for those who attended the annual town meeting last evening. It went well. I'm sure you've all heard. I have a proclamation this evening that I did bring to the Beecher School Ice Cream Social, but I guess the microphone wasn't working and got to visit with a lot of folks, but thought it best to do it this evening. So I'll hold it up briefly, but then I need to put it down. It's quite long, quite large, but here it is. I was a member way back when at the PTO, had a lot of friends and met a lot of people that are still my friends, actually, 30 years later. So with your permission, I'd like to read the proclamation. Thank you. Whereas since 1972, the Beecher Road School Parents/Teacher Organization has organized and provided an avenue for parents to engage in the support of many educational innovations. And whereas many of the activities, special programs, and educational opportunities that make Beecher Road School the most sought-after elementary school in the area are organized under the leadership of the Beecher PTO. And whereas the PTO organizes events to recognize the dedication of both teachers and staff to the students and their families. And whereas, without this invaluable organization, students would not have such fond memories of events as the Halloween Hoot, Ice Cream Social, Book Fair, Picture Day, and sixth grade graduation. And whereas, always mindful of the whole student and the community, the Beecher Road School PTO participates in many community activities, a small sampling of which are raising funds to build the popular Kuzinskis Loop in memory of a beloved teacher, my son's dad, toy drives, Thanksgiving baskets, and holiday toy drive. Now therefore, I, Beth Heller, Woodbridge First Selectman, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, hereby congratulate the Beecher Road School Parent/Teachers Organization on 50 years of dedication and service to the Beecher Road School students and the community beyond. And it's given this fifth day of May, 2022. We were ready to bring it to the Ice Cream Social, that's why it's dated that way. So thank you. And I will make it my business to get it to Joy at some point. And thank you all over the years. It's a great thing. So thank you for allowing me to come and do this this evening. It's my honor.
Beth, thank you so much. We really appreciate your acknowledgement of the PTO and the wonderful work they do through the school. And we'll move on now to PTO report. Hi, Joy. We can't hear you, Joy.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay. I'm, we're in the car, so please bear with me. Thank you, Beth Heller, for that wonderful proclamation. And congratulations, Abby and Ethan, on the SCASSA Award. Good evening, everyone, for the PTO update. In last week's PTO meeting, we went over the nominations for next year's PTO Board. And we're happy to report that next year's PTO President will be Rui Xijian. Co-Treasurers will be Sumi Siddhir and Linda Christie. And our Recording Secretary will be Jennifer Plonsky. We're also happy to report that with the events coming back to Beecher in person, we've been meeting so many wonderful, new and amazing moms and dads who plan to be actively involved as PTO volunteers next year. We had our spring Scholastic Book Fair on April 29 through the 25th, and it was a huge success, breaking yet another record as our most successful book fair to date, earning us over $8,000 in scholastic dollars, which will be used to purchase more books for our libraries next year. We had our Teacher and Staff Appreciation Breakfast on May 3rd. We did that with Jane in the cafeteria. She provided hot items such as eggs, sausages, French toast sticks. And we got croissants and bagels, cinnamon buns, fruit salad, yogurt granola, coffee and juice. And Kara made M&amp;M treat bags, over 200 of those. We also installed two new We Love Our Teacher and Staff banners, one up north and one down south. That same week, on May 5th, we were able to have our first Ice Cream Social in almost three years, celebrating 50 years of the Beecher Road School PTO. We had at least 800 people come out from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It was wonderful to get the community together. It was a beautiful night, and lots of ice cream was had. We're getting ready for Quasi Night this Friday with our Bethany Community School, and that's going to be on May 20th from 4:30 to 8:30. Tickets will be on sale until the night before, May 19th, on drs.ptoboard.com. Price is $30 per ticket. This is a PTO fundraiser. Everyone over the age of 12 months must have a ticket to get in. This is not a drop-off event. Every child will need to be accompanied by an adult. As of today, Bethany Community School sold over 280 tickets, and they expect to pass 300 by Friday. And we have sold 583 tickets and expect we'll be well over 600 by Friday as well. The weather forecast looks amazing, and it's going to be such a fun night. Next week is Arts Week 15. That means the 15th year, and the theme is trees. That's May 23 through the 27th. The Arts Week t-shirts arrived today, and Lola and I will be getting those to everybody this week. Let's see. During Arts Week, we're going to have Bill, Yoga with Bill, for our students on the 25th. And he will be doing the tree pose with them and taking pictures with the whole class. We're going to be doing a whole-school performance with Serious Coyote on the 24th. And we will have our Arts Night again in person with Art Studios on Thursday, the 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And Arts Week, we have our beautiful Beecher Family Tree Art Installation. Becky Burford has installed that. It is extraordinary. If you haven't had a chance to see it, we have over 850 cut-out little wooden leaves that each student has decorated, and they were kind of wired up into a canopy on the campus, and they're just beautiful. We also did one of our most favorite, one of my favorite things ever today. We had a tree installation project with Woodbridge Estate Cares Richard Lewis. He removed two dead trees, one down south and one up north. The larger tree down south was brought back to us repurposed into a bench next to the newly-planted tree. He installed two trees and the bench today with our kindergarten classes, who will be caring for our newly-planted Weeping Purple Fountain Beach trees. They'll be doing that with their families, watering them for the next couple of years as they become fully established. We took pictures with all of the kindergartners with the new tree down south, and we'll be taking another one when they are sixth graders to show how much the trees and the children have grown. And I just feel like ending my PTO career here at Beecher, being able to be part of that was just really, really special. We also joined the Town of Woodbridge for the community bike ride this past Saturday. Mrs. Sherman, Mrs. Meacham, and I ran the Beecher Pit Stop and greeted about 40 to 50 riders with water and a quick snack before they headed back to the town green. Hoot the Owl and my daughter's American Girl doll were on bikes as well, and there were some photo ops, and it was adorable. Really beautiful weather and just a great, another community event. Sixth grade graduation, we are in full gear for that. We have, the yearbooks are being printed now. They should be arriving on June 2nd. The t-shirts I just picked up today, and those are going to be for our Field Day with VCS at the Amity Middle School Bethany next week, on the 25th. Amy and I are going to be meeting virtually with the Planning Committee on the 18th, talk about the pool party that we are planning for June 15th from 4:30 to 7:00 at the Woodbridge Pool Club. And the graduation ceremony will be on the 17th. We're still waiting to hear on the final details from administration as to the time and place for that. And that's all I have, but that's a lot. Thank you for your time tonight.
Joy, thanks so much. I certainly appreciate all that the PTO does. The tree bench is amazing. I saw it when I walked in today. So what a lovely thought for the kindergartners to grow into that tree. Lovely. Moving on to Consent Agenda. Is there a way that we cannot have the background? Maybe that's better? Yeah, because Marcia just texted and said that she can hear an echo. So that's much better for me. The minutes from the April 19, 2022 regular meeting is included in this evening's Consent Agenda, along with the Budget Narrative, a Budget Summary. Detailed financial report also included in the Consent Agenda are nine policies for 30-day review. Is there anything that the Board wishes to extract from tonight's Consent Agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to accept the Consent Agenda? Maria?
I move approval of the Consent Agenda as presented.
Do I have a second? Brooke? All those in favor? It's unanimous, Marcia. Thank you. Moving on to three. Item three, we're going to have the Beecher Road School update first. And so I'm going to call on Ms. Kiesel for that.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to be speaking this evening on behalf of Mrs. Sherman, who was unable to attend tonight. And the first item to share is a huge thank you to the PTO and the Board of Education for treating all of the staff during Staff Appreciation Week. The breakfast and ice cream were delicious, and we are grateful for the show of appreciation. It really meant a lot to the staff. The students in grades three to six, as well as MAG, Year Three and Year Four, have been hard at work taking the smarter balanced assessments. And the testing will be continuing, and there are lots of makeup that will have to continue as well. But kudos to all of the students for all of the hard work they've done. They're really focused, and they're signed through the hallway of reminders of people with pictures from the third-grade wing to, you know, keep going, you can do it, and also reminders to be quiet so they can focus. Last month, Mrs. Sherman reported on the first field trip since COVID. And I'm happy to announce that there will be a few more that have been, that are being scheduled. There's one to Bear'sley Zoo. There's a Steam Day, local town historical site, and all of these, and a few more will occur before the end of the school year. So that's really big news. And in other school-wide events, many of our students have engaged in some fun mathematical endeavors during the month of April, which was Mathematical Awareness Month, as well as Poetry Month. The most popular activity seems to be an estimation station that occurred, and many students requested that it happen several more times before the year ends. And this month is also Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and the students have had some read-alouds that they're enjoying so far. So thank you for letting me share this evening. And any questions?
Any questions, Board members? Okay. Cheryl, thank you so much. Appreciate you filling in for us this evening and giving the Beecher Road School update. Next on the agenda. Dr. Bud, we're up to you.
Everybody, we have three items. Thank you, everybody. We have three. Thank you, everybody. We have three items for you tonight. I'm going to share my screen. First is our standing item on the Safe Which Are an Update. The Board met, as you know, Board members last Wednesday for a special meeting. This is a brief update after that point. Of course, we continue to thank everybody who stays home from school when they are symptomatic. We continue to offer optional in-school screening testing on Wednesday afternoons through the Connecticut Department of Public Health. And we continue to offer free COVID self-test kits to any student or staff who would want one. I give a monthly update to the Board on COVID-19 cases. And since the last update, which was at our last meeting, we've had 71 confirmed cases here at Beecher. And remember, that indicates that somebody has tested positive and was here at Beecher within the 48 hours prior. Based on what we had discussed last Wednesday at the special meeting, we are continuing at 50% student usage of the cafeteria. Ms. Sherman has reintroduced three feet social distancing. Desk shields continue in the classrooms and in the cafeteria for snack and lunch, and we continue cohorting at dismissal. That is the end of that particular update. Would you like to pause for questions on this, or the second and third?
Board member, any questions?
BHD? You were so close. BD.
They get an update on every case that we have information on. So all of those 71, they get those updates. They reach out at least to most of those individuals and get the specific information. And then the superintendents have a weekly call, if necessary, more with KPHD.
Anything else, Board member? Okay, Dr. Bud, moving on.
Second presentation. Statutory presentation of Wellness at Beecher. And I would refer Board members to the packet because there is a document in there that was discussed at Finance Committee this past week, which represents the great work of Mr. Hewitt and Jane Roddy, our Food Services Supervisor in their department. Mr. Hewitt can't be with us this evening. But I would just point out that by statute, our policy, 142.101, which is students' policy... By statute, the policy requires these six items be discussed or presented annually to the Board. And Ms. Roddy is in the best position to speak about this through the documents that the Finance Committee saw last week. So I will turn it right over to Jane.
Mrs. Roddy, could you just wait a minute? Someone needs to mute. It was a call-in user. Call-in user number two needs to mute. Thank you.
So Dick and I put together a presentation for the Finance Committee in just stating what has occurred during this year of what's going on in the cafeteria with the CA group of this program. And this year, we are at a 53% participation rate, which is the highest that we've ever been. And it probably has to do with the fact that the government is paying for the lunches. But so we were having a discussion about what we're going to do next year. So in our discussion with Jay and everybody, we decided that we're going to leave the lunch price the same, if they should go back to paying for lunches. So we're going to leave the lunch prices the same to hope to keep the participation rate up, and then raise the prices of the à la carte items. And we, you know, just to be on par with what the cost of the food service and the food items are because they're increasing. We also are still members of the Healthy Food Snack Program, and will continue to be members of that program. In fact, Dr. Bud signed us up today for next year, so we're all set there. Now, I don't know if there's anything else that you want me to tell them for next year or this year?
Would you speak a little bit to the policy audit, the three-year audit?
Oh, true.
You have just undergone.
We are, and our Wellness Committee for the school is in the process of doing the WellStat audit, which is done triannually. And this is the year that ours has to be done by July 1st. And Lisa is working on the summary. We've taken the surveys that we needed to take, and now she's compiled the information, working on the summary. And we will then bring forward at a later date how we're doing. You know, are we in our wellness policy, following in the performance? You know, are we in our wellness policy following in the performance? Are they matching? And if they're not, what we plan to do to make it the same. So Lisa's doing that right now, and at a later time, she'll have a better report to give us. And then we won't have to do that again for three years.
Do you want to continue?
I could do questions here if you have.
Okay. Any board member questions?
As well as your staff do very dedicated service to the school district, day after day after day. And the pandemic has challenged the delivery of food service throughout the state and the nation. And some of this is totally separate from schools, things like supply chain issues and the like. But Jane Roddy and her team pulled it together and have held it together through all of those really complex ups and downs. So we don't often get a chance to get you right on the screen, Jane. Often, you're just listening to the meeting. But I know the board joins in commending you and the team for all you do.
Well, thank you very much.
And I want to give you a round of applause, Jane, for your wonderful presentation. As Dr. Bud said, Jane and her team do an amazing job in the cafeteria. And we thank you, Jane, for your many years of service to the district.
Yeah, it's going to be me. He's going to talk tomorrow. Do you have any more on wellness at Beecher?
And our third presentation this evening is on the strategic plan development. And we have a few slides to show you on the district's progress on this. You know, a strategic plan committee is ultimately looking forward and thinking about things that have not happened yet. And that's both imaginative and audacious. And the core team that met about three weeks ago for two full days was engaged in very strong work. You see some of the representatives here, including some board members in some of these photographs. But this was a very generative process. And the members of the core team, who span the different constituents in our district, are listed here. And all provided outstanding, outstanding work. And Ms. Delprey, Ms. Piasik, Ms. Williamson were members of the board on that core team. To outline briefly for the board the process elements, day one, if you will, was really an opportunity to think about where this district is, where certain trends are headed, where certain trends are and where they're headed in education, and what are the core commitments of the wood... etc. The team brainstorming, organizing all that feedback, survey feedback, interview feedback, and sharing the goals. I think it's important that you see the three main elements of a goal because there's, if you saw and heard all of the work of the team, there are many things that could be done. But as I've mentioned before, the value of strategic planning is that the district will be able to focus on a few key goals that are good for many. And it's not about what we're already doing well. It's about what needs to be done for the future. So considering multiple competing needs, what might the priority be? And ultimately, thinking about where the district believes it should be in five years are three goals, and I have on this slide sort of a capturing of all three, and then we'll talk more about each one. But ultimately, the work that would be focused from a pre-K6 perspective is in three main categories, if you will. The first, on building diverse alliances and healthy alliances. More on that in a moment. The second, we could categorize as an academic framework. And a third, closely related contemporary learners. Building diverse alliances and building healthy alliances moves in this direction for the district to create and support an inclusive environment that embraces awareness of and deepens appreciation of diversity and individuality while promoting the social-emotional wellness of all students. Now, you might say, well, what exactly would that look like? How would we get there? What would happen next? The purpose of tonight's presentation is to just give the macro level. That's what we have at the moment. But the core team members heard and discussed a lot about why this is quite important. And although there's a lot in here, it is about, from my perspective, each and every student and each and every staff member in the community feeling valued, feeling that his or her perspective on any specific issue is important and also being socially and emotionally well. That's why, although there are six words in the title, it's hard to simplify it more. It's both building diverse alliances and building healthy alliances. Next, from an academic framework perspective, to develop and support the coherency and the research base of the curriculum at Beecher Road School. And there were some specific topics talked about in this regard. One, but not the only one, was recent legislation on advancing reading, the learning of how to read. Another one is advancing inquiry-based learning in STEAM areas. But the point is that if the curriculum doesn't get developed on a regular basis, one could say it stagnates. And we want it to be the most up-to-date curriculum it can be, tied to the research to foster students' inquiry skills and build students' intellectual confidence. And of course, we have 850 students, so how this happens would likely look different for different groups of them. But the point is, this is a specific learning academic framework. And finally, related to that is to develop contemporary learners. And this is not to say anything about learning of the past. It's simply to say that in 2022 to 2027, we want here to develop and integrate project-based learning opportunities into the curriculum to continue to promote student choice and critical thinking as we prepare our students for future learning and responsible global citizenship. So there's a lot there as well. What that looks like would likely look different at different grade levels. But it's somewhat allied with the prior goal, except one could have a coherent, research-based curriculum that doesn't do a ton with project-based learning, student-choice, critical thinking. So I support the core team's separation of this contemporary learners into its own goal because it dignifies these particular elements. So as we had talked about back in September with the whole scheme for strategic planning, the core team has now delved into this. They've developed these goals. And the next SAR that members of the committee will divide to develop action plans with objectives. So that's where I say before, if you don't know what would this look like? What would happen in year one as opposed to year three? The committee has to develop action plans for each one of those goals, link to objectives, action steps, and resources. Our consultant will also be developing and working to implement a communication plan around these, but likely that will happen a little bit later, once the action plans are developed. And ultimately, we're thinking for a five-year review and renewal process so that in all sorts of ways, key work of the district gets grounded back to these three. So it was important to have this presentation this evening so you could understand what happened three weeks ago. I know three of you were there, but the point is, that allows all eight of you to understand where that is so that in future months, when you have the presentation of the action plans, you will remember hopefully fondly this moment and say, aha, that's what he talked about. So I'm happy to stop presenting there. And perhaps the three of you, many of the three of you are there, want to say anything else? Great core team work.
Thanks, Jonathan. Erin, did you want to add anything as a member?
Yep. All right. Sure. I mean, it was a great, for, I wish everyone in our community could have been a part of it. Honestly, I think it was a really awesome process to go through. It was an exciting process. It got me excited about what is coming in store for Beecher. I think oftentimes, we're so focused on, especially in the last couple of years, on, you know, this is a challenging time we're going through, right? COVID has happened. There's a lot of other things happening. And so it was nice to be able to step back and think about, like, what could be. It was also really fascinating to read about this generation and what it's going to be like for this generation and what they expect in terms of their education, in terms of, like, being project-based and being inquisitive and wanting a lot more say because while I know we don't want to degrade those of us who are past learners, that was not, you know, how we were taught. It's just, it's so different. And so thinking about, like, all right, this is going to be a lot... It really felt like we were talking about, like, what is education going to look like in the future? And it really felt like, okay, we're at a moment now where it's going to pivot. And it's going to pivot to, like, for example, no longer is technology going to be like, okay, now you go learn how to type and you go learn how to be on the computer. Technology is just going to be infused into how we are learning and growing and developing. And the same with project-based learning. So I thought it was really exciting and invigorating. I do wish that everyone in our community could have been a part of it because I think they would have been excited about the prospect as well. And I really, really enjoyed the person, the outside consultant that we brought in. I thought she did a phenomenal job facilitating that process.
I echo all of those comments. Sarah Beth, did you have anything else as a participant? Yeah, excellent, excellent, Erin. So now, for those who weren't in attendance, are there any questions that you have of Jonathan or any of the other participants who were there?
I'm Brooke Hopkins. So Erin, when you were talking about it's a difference in learning, are we getting away from, like, individualism, you're saying, versus, like, collectivism? What, what were you thinking the students were?
So I caveat this with, I'm not Maria. I signed in as Maria. I'm really becoming now here as Maria. I'm Erin. But, and also that I'm not an educator or an expert in this. So please, you know, correct me if I am getting this wrong. But my understanding was, you know, when I was in class, I won't sleep for any of you. When I was in class, you know, you sat there and you were taught, like, this is what you will learn about science. This is what you will learn about, you know, geography or history. And we were kind of taught, and we more memorized things and then regurgitated it back onto a test. And this is more, instead of just learning how to, like, digest the information and regurgitate it, it's more, how do you ask the right questions? How do you teach children to be inquisitive and to almost, like, not just accept things as they are, but think about, like, well, I get that that's how it is now, but how would it look if we looked at it from this angle? Or if something changed? In part because the world is changing so fast in terms of technology, in terms of other things, that whatever, like, factual things they learn now, they might in some ways be irrelevant to the jobs that they get after they graduate. And so we more want to teach them to be inquisitive learners. And also, the other thing that they really emphasized is, well, we would learn, or I will say just so well, I would learn, and it would be a lot of, a lot was independent. Like, what are you learning as Erin? What are you learning as Mike? What are you learning as Brooke? That the new world and the global world is requiring us to interface with each other so much that part of the skill is how do you work with each other? How do you partner on projects? How do you, if you come to the table and you have to build a house together, think not just of the math and the geometry that goes into building the house, but think of the fact that, you know, hey, Jeff wants, you know, a really big hallway, and I don't. I don't want a big hallway. I want a really big bathroom. And how are we going to resolve this conflict that we have while we build this project?
Okay. So there still will be, like, the individualism, though, where they can still use their own analytical thinking, constructive, we're self-reliant, you get yourself ahead.
Yeah, and in fact, one of the things that they emphasized was that not only is there all of that, like, kids want a say. They want a say in what they're learning, and they want a say in how they do it. So it might be, again, I'm not an educator, but it might be, hey, we're learning about biology, but I want a say in which animal I choose. I want to say, and so there is a level of individualism. And they actually did talk a lot about how kids are going to learn at different rates, and you have to be able to teach to that kid and give them things that are enticing to them. But, and figuring out how to do that in a classroom with, you know, 20 other kids and all this stuff going on, in some ways, projects allow for that type of learning and stuff. Please correct me if I got any of that wrong. I did my best.
Mike, any questions?
Yeah. First of all, I love, I love that. I love the focus on critical thinking, on developing curious kids. I love the focus on problem-solving and trying to resolve differences of opinion and hearing different points of view. I love all of that. I can, I could imagine how that functions in classes like, you know, literature, social studies, even science. I'm wondering if there are, are there implications for math? How, did you hear anything in there about where math is going? And how, any of this is playing a role in that?
I don't think we talked about subject-specific. It was more the DSO side. But I do think that as a board, one of the things that Jonathan brought up was kind of the need for this, us to really invest in curricula and curricula development because this is going to be kind of both taking what's happening at the legislative level and what we're mandated to do as a school, but also taking this forward-thinking and kind of making sure that we're building a curriculum that meets the needs of this generation. And I think thinking that that is going to take resources, both probably financial and time, and what is the implication for us as a board in terms of our decision-making around that? But we didn't talk about specific subject areas.
Yeah, I think that's, like, in the weeds for the next step. It was, it was a more overview look that we did for two days. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Being of interest, particularly that the legislation has now moved one more time to say that local curriculum must be brought to the board curriculum, a board's curriculum committee, and ultimately for the board for approval. So that's from the state level, yet another way that the local board can say, these are the priorities we have. How do they meet all students' needs? And, yeah, in five years, there should be really marked growth. But the committee will have to come back to this board with some proposed action plans to say this is how we might propose sequencing things.
Jeff, any questions? I'll make a note for the people watching that Mr. Hughes has joined us this evening. Jay, any questions? Comments?
More comments and questions. So I just wanted to thank the team. So the team involved not only board members, well, teachers who took their time to come to this and contribute, parents, there was administrators, the whole list is there. I think Jonathan put up the slide. That's why I really wanted to reiterate the thanks to them because, you know, this is a team effort, and it is a plan that will involve continual effort from a team. I was pleased to see the three areas. I think healthy and diverse environments are very, very important for us. I was also looking at the academic framework. That really appealed to me because I, you know, I believe that research-based curricula are very important. And Mike mentioned the word, I was going to use the word curiosity-driven learning. And I think that's something I was hearing, which, I think that's what the work... And I think that's something I was hearing, which I think that's what the workforce, and I think that's what we're demanding. Now, one thing I wanted to do was to go back to school. So I could do that. Erin's right. When we sat there, we were told what to do. And what I'd like to see is the kids to develop their own intellectual stimulation and curiosity and learn. I think that works well. On that point, I sort of just had a quick point on curriculum. So there's two parts of this, and I wanted to sort of get some idea on this. Who builds the curriculum? Or how would you go about building that curriculum? Because you're asking for a research, research-based curriculum. So my first thought is, okay, are we going to use inside resources? Are we going to use external resources? Are we going to get a specialist in? And the second part is, how do we continue to maintain that momentum? So this is going to require some investment. And so I think we need to also maybe think about resources as we go along and develop this plan. And last but not least, very quickly, I think we've got on the contemporary learners, at least when I, I know Sarah Beth and I, we're in the MAGA, children are in the MAG community. And I do see that firsthand research-based learning, curiosity-based learning. And so I think Mike asked a good question about math. So just a few weeks ago, I did a little seminar on game theory. Mike and I had probably done this at PhD level. I did a very simple collective game with the students. They, you could be heard, I think it was Sherman came walking down, because you could hear them screaming and laughing right down the corridor. So there are lots of areas in the math curriculum where we can develop our understanding on sustainable resource by playing simple games and understanding the mathematics. And you've got to be able to multiply and add and divide and work together. So I think there is great scope in that math curriculum to involve sort of thinking along the lines that we do at Vanderbilt. But they did a great job. I do this with my undergrads and these guys in the classroom, they were about seven, eight-year-olds. They did an amazing job in math. They figured it out much quicker than my undergrads, which was very, very good to see. So that was just it. But thank you so much, Erin and Sarah Beth and Maria for doing this. This was excellent. And Lynn. Oh, Maria wasn't there. I thought there was. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Thanks anyway, Maria. Yes. Jay, I think you raised a really good point, that this is something that curriculum committee is going to have to start talking about, how we're going to drive this forward, developing the curriculum and, and so forth. So, so that can be on the curriculum committee's agenda perhaps in the future. And I'm sure that Judy Wilson might have some suggestions for us as well in that area. She was very dynamic, very dynamic. So, and I think she really learned about the Beecher community. She was a quick learner about the direction that the teachers, the staff, the parents, the board members were headed in. And so I think she might be able to give us some, some help with that. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Jonathan. So talking about curriculum, Mike, you're next.
So we met on May 5th at four o'clock. There was no public comment. We had three topics that were discussed. One was an update on school attendance. The other was health education and gifted and talented. Key points from the school attendance is that relatively high number of unexcused absences, 237, and 316 parties, 20 chronic absent students and 15 truant. We, we discussed trying to get a better handle on understanding the number of unexcused absences and what some of the reasons might be for that. On, on the upside, we are documenting those unexcused absences more thoroughly now. So, and future meetings, we'll be able to dig deeper into understanding what some of those causes might be. One thing to note about that is that students get recorded as unexcused if, for example, they're, they're kept at home for illness, but they don't have a doctor's note for that illness. So I think we suspect that a chunk of those unexcused absences are kids who are kept at home for that reason. And we encourage kids to stay home if they have symptoms as well. On health education, we got an overview of what we're doing on that front and the direction where we're going. Kids in K through six are, take health class for 30 minutes every six days. And we got an overview of the various standards by grade level. And with regard to gifted and talented, it was brought to our attention that there's a new public act that we're going to have to respond to by July 1st, 2022, where essentially we're going to have to detail what our process is for selecting gifted and talented students. And so we have a process in place now, but that process will need to be revised over, over the next year. So that's it.
Thank you, Mike. And I'll note that one of the policies on 30-day review is gifted and talented students program. So that's something that board members might want to take an additional look at based on Mike's comments. Anyone have any questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike. Finance committee report. Do you want Jay to go first and then you have a presentation? Okay, Jay?
Okay. So the finance committee met on the 13th of May, 5:01 PM. The business operations manager, superintendent, Maria Madonik, Sarah Beth Delprey, and myself, including Lynn Piazic were present. Erin Williamson was online for that meeting. There were no public comments at the meeting, but no action was taken at the meeting. Were two key items discussed at the finance meeting. The first was the presentation that Jane Roddy, Food Services Operations Director, just gave us. And I'd really like to thank Jane and her team for an excellent job they do. And I'm going to come back to one or two things that I think are important from what Jane said. So I want to mention those quickly. First, as Jane said, participation was at 53%, largely driven by state providing free meals, but also COVID, I think also had an impact on that. And that's expected to end on June the 30th. Now, we're not sure if that is going to end or not, but it's expected to end. And so now we sort of got this challenge. Food prices, commodity prices have increased over time. And so as Jane explained, we're going to keep the primary meal constant in terms of price. And so it's the à la carte items. One of my favorite items is on there, popcorn. But just to give you an indication on the price implication, it's about a quarter. So most of these items, I think ice cream, that's my second favorite item, they're all going up by about a quarter. So it's good that these are all on the healthy eating. Am I right? So that was the implication. Last but not least, there's something I've really got to commend Jane and the team on. So what I learned at the meeting was that it's been several decades where the budget for the food services department has always come in at or under the budgeted item. Now, what I also read was that this is one area that most schools have a lot of trouble with in terms of having to find money at the end of the year for food services. So I'd really like to commend Jane for her work on this and her excellent team. Ensuring that we're well in the budget. And aside these, any excess that's generated usually goes back into the school for equipment or necessary items. And so that's really, really excellent. So I think, you know, this was an excellent presentation. The numbers are right. I'm much better than I would have expected. So we're doing really, really well in that area. Thank you, Jane.
And just to clarify for the public watching, it's not like we can buy books with that. It has to go back into the cafeteria, but it replaces equipment and things that are needed to run the cafeteria. That's done so well. So we've been very lucky in that case.
Thank you, Lynn. So I'm going to move on to the second item, which we went on to. So we looked at the operating budget as of May the 1st. The projections show that the budget is very, very tight. The budget is available on Board, on Board book. You can, anybody can see the budget and the projections that Richard Hewitt has presented. We're hoping that it will break even. Nonetheless, there's a few takeaways from the meeting that I think are worth mentioning. At the moment, the business office is closing out all the accruals. These are any prepayments, any outstanding payments. And so again, the business operations manager told us that that's really happening very quickly and hopefully that will close up very soon. And the amount outstanding are actually reasonably small. I, I believe there were less than $25,000. The second item, which was very, very good, is that the MRF and the medical insurance costs have stabilized completely. This was something that we worried about in October, right through to January. And so that was excellent news. Now, there's a few negatives here that I'm going to mention. First, there's retirement payments for recently announced retirees. These are expected to impact the budget. So at the moment, this is bringing in about a $50,000 deficit. And so this may not be the final number because I believe you have until the end of the semester to announce whether you will retire. So this could, you know, increase depending upon the retirements. So we're going to try and keep a close eye on that, but I believe it'll be the end of June when we'll hear on that. There's also other professional services that went up by about $40,000 over budget. And this was, we need a nurse. We had somebody stepped down, so we had to go out and recruit a nurse for the school. And we had to go through an agency. So agency costs are much higher. And hopefully we'll be able to turn this around and, you know, not pay as much going forward next year. For now, that was about a $40,000 hit to our budget. Last but not least, the things we talked about was the legal costs. Currently, we're sitting at about $26,000 over budget and the expectation is we'll be at about $50,000 over budget. And one of the things I've noticed and some of the board members have noticed is that we don't get a timely updating on the costs. I believe most law firms do this, but I sort of requested if we could get this timely updating or at least on the hours, so we can sort of build this in a little better. So we know coming into the last month of the year, we know exactly where we stand and we don't get billed in September or December for something that was, should have been cleared during June. So that was really my last thing. So if there's any questions?
Thanks, Jay. Any questions from board members about the finance committee meeting? Okay, then we're going to move on to Dr. Bud for 2022, 2023 capital budget and operating budget update.
Sure. And if I can just say an addendum to what Jay was speaking of, the board is aware that the district has a claim against a neighboring district for outstanding funds due. And my office issued a letter, a formal letter, related to the payment that I will share with the board. But that went yesterday by certified mail. And obviously, we want to pay the bills that we have to other people. We would need to expect the same from them. So that is an update on our, if you will, collection efforts. In a different vein, I'd like to share this with you because it represents the work of the town, which culminated in a town meeting last night. And so this is the updated final presentation of our capital budget and operating budget for next year, at least from the macro perspective. The three bullets on the top of this slide are what was approved in the capital budget. So $351,000 was approved for roof replacement. That is to include the architect's design fees and $125,000 for in general flooring remediation and replacement. But that is a, a little bit of a catch-all project related to some areas of the school where both flooring and other areas need to be updated. I am speaking with Mr. Genevieve this afternoon. It is likely that both projects will go through the bonding process. This board had identified other capital needs over the past 12 months. The oil tank remediation at Beecher will likely be paid from the town's current contingency. It is not in the capital budget, nor is it in, expected to be paid from our operating budgets. We also have a retro commissioning project that comes out of the Van Zalm study that was done this year. And that actually is being paid for out of the current operating budget and is actually in process. We have an ongoing need to update our network wiring from a technology perspective, although that was requested at one point to be funded in the capital budget. That was not funded in the capital budget. So as you see in the bottom bullet, that will either need to be paid unlikely from this year's operating budget, either next year's operating budget or potentially the ARPESR grant. And I'll come back to that concept in a moment. But that's the capital budget. The operating budget as approved was a 5% flat increase to start. And then based on some adjustment that was needed when medical insurance was taken into account, there was another $80,000, which takes us to five, slightly over five and a half percent. In addition to that, there will be from the town a direct appropriation from, you're all familiar, the excess cost grant from the special education students who, who get those funds. That will be $167,500 directly from the town. So that's not a percentage on the base, but it does mean that our total operating budget for next year will be, as indicated in red, $16,587,201. Now, the macro, and that's where we are because we're not even hardly 24 hours after these decisions were finalized. But what can you and the public expect as the next steps? First of all, the potential timelines for the capital projects will be presented by Richard Hewitt, Vito Esparro, and myself at the facilities, June 7th meeting. Okay? Then in terms of the operating budget, this board ultimately has to approve a final budget reconciliation at its June 20th meeting, right? So the board has to figure out how all the line items are going to match $16,587,201. So in order to do that, we do have one finance committee meeting already scheduled on June 14th, but we think it's a wise idea to schedule another one. It wouldn't, it would be before June 14th because June 14th is so close to the 20th. But we, we won't take time tonight to go through all the bullets. But as you might reflect from a couple of months ago, we are very, very fortunate that the town has been generous to us in this budget process. At the same time, there will be decisions the board is going to have to make because the, the list of items the board would have totally hoped for will not be accommodated by that dollar amount. So the administrative team, as the last bullet says, is going to have to take into account all the known line item updates. So for example, the cost of contractual increases that maybe we didn't know three months ago, but we know now. The cost of medical insurance, which we know now. Savings that we might have from retirees, et cetera. Where we are with class sectioning and what our final recommendation will be. And anyway, by the time we get to the first finance committee meeting between now and the June 20th meeting of the board, we'll have all of that in order. And that will give the board due time to reflect on choices that could be made. But I end by saying that that dollar figure on the prior slide will position the district much better for success next year than a lot of other alternatives. And I think we should be thankful to the town and its leadership in recognizing both the capital and the operating budget needs that, that are necessary for years. Happy with Jay.
Jay, others answer any questions, but that's a very timely update.
Thank you, Dr. Bud. And that was a quick turnaround after last night's meeting. Any questions from the board about that? You have a question, Jay? Go ahead. Go ahead.
So Jonathan, I got a very, very quick budget question. So from the, I'd like to thank the town. I'd like to thank the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectment for supporting our needs and supporting our increase for next year. They've been very, very supportive and understanding. And I'd also like to thank the board members because it's been a collective effort. And Jonathan and Richard. But on top of that, I noticed that we're getting $167,500 direct appropriation from the special excess cost grant. What was the total of the excess cost grant?
Well, I don't want to be very precise for next year because neither Richard nor Cheryl is here. I believe it's anticipated to be a little bit over $200,000. How much over $200,000? I don't want to speculate, but certainly we'll have that number. And as you all know, but I guess we'll say for the public, this relates to actual students with special needs whose expenses are more than 4.5 times the per pupil. So where's, that relates a lot to the process of are there students who enter or exit the district? As well as how does the state calculate our actual per pupil? And what is 4.5 times? I think it's safe to say over $200,000.
So the town is appropriating us $167,500 of that. So how much of this current year's excess cost grant was appropriated back to the school? Do we know?
We do know, but I don't have it with me. So we can definitely talk about it.
I could definitely talk about it. That would be great to know because that's very good that the town is willing to appropriate us $167,500. But it's also good to know what percentage going forward. So if there's a percentage there that we know, then we can build that in and forecast going forward. And that would be very, very useful to know. Thanks, Jonathan.
Thanks, Jay. Any other questions? So I would just say to the public that we'll be working on scheduling a second Finance Committee meeting, and that will then be posted on Board Book.
The final thing I should say, like I said, I would say something about, and I didn't, was the ARPESR grant funding. And you might remember a few months ago when we were talking about ways to reconcile the budget, there were some allowable things that could go into ARPESR. An example, being the additional social worker desired by the board, you know, very reasonably desired. So we also want to make sure that the Finance Committee and then the board has a strong update on where we are with ARPESR, for one thing, so that we're not over committing it to many projects and then realizing, wait a minute. So we'll have that update as well.
Great. Thanks, Jonathan. Policy Committee report. Maria?
Thank you, Lynn. Yes, the Policy Committee met on May 16th. And we currently have nine policies that are included in the agenda packet and available on Board Book that are up for 30-day review. Our, most of those policies bring us in line with some of the new state statutes that have come out regarding those policies. Our next meeting will be June 14th at 7:00 PM. And then we do today have three policies that have been on 30-day review that are up for discussion and adoption today.
Yeah. I'm just making notes, policies, June 14th to 7:00 PM?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. The first policy that we have up for consideration is Policy 3160, Budget Development Administration Monitoring and Transfer of Funds. While this policy has been on 30-day review, I've had the chance to look at comparable policies in other districts. And I would make a motion to return this policy to Policy Committee for some further review and consideration.
Okay. All right, Maria made a motion. Do I have a second? Brooke? Okay, so the motion is to return the policy to the Policy Committee for some further discussion. Motion made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Brooke Hopkins. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'm just curious for the rationale, why we're sending it back. Because it's Cheryl Lordmore.
Yeah, there are, in these policies, there are about to talk about what the district is allowed to leave within budget items, between budget items. And there are just comparable policies within the state where those numbers vary. And there are, where are the more liberal ends of that? Of that spectrum. And also, you know, our district is in a little soft sovereignty. You know, we're replacing a lot of key administrators in the little roles. So I think, although we have her many people in place, she should take a look at those, especially with that number. Because it is more of a liberal end of the amount.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Jerry.
Just going to back up what Maria just said. I think most entities go, use a percentage basis. 1% to 5% usually is very high, depending on the size of the budget. So in this case, when, I think Maria went back and looked, and I looked as well, we felt that the amount was extremely large in terms of control with an individual or a group of individuals. So just from an internal control perspective, I think we need to revisit it and look at it.
And those key players are changing. So it's not even that we're with the people we know at the moment, so.
And any other questions or comments on the motion? Okay, I'm going to call the roll on this one. Maria? Yes. Sarah Beth?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Aaron? And I'll vote yes, so it's unanimous. Thank you, Maria. Want to move on to the next one?
Sure. The next one is Policy 5111, Admission and Placement. And a lot of what has been discussed in this policy when we reviewed it, the proposed changes bring us within, in the language of the current state statutes and acts, and what we need to include as far as placement of students and brings us up to date legally with the law. So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Policy 5111, Admission and Placement as Revised.
Do I have a second? Brooke? The motion is to adopt Policy 5111, made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Brooke Hopkins. Any discussion? All right, since there was no discussion, I'm going to call just for raising of your hand, hoping it's unanimous vote. If it's not, then we'll call the roll. Unanimous, thank you, Jeff. Moving on to the next one, Maria?
Thank you, Lynn. And our third and final policy tonight is Policy 5118.1, our policy regarding homeless students. And this policy deals with our recognition and unfolding those students into our school. And again, the language in this policy is bringing us up to date with current state statute and language as well. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt Policy 5118.1, Homeless Students as Revised.
Second, Jay? The motion is to adopt the revised Policy 5118.1, Homeless Students. Motion made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Jay Dyer. Any discussion? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you, Maria. Anything else on policy?
No, that's it. And again, our next meeting is just more 20 seconds.
Thanks. Cave Liaison Report. Anything from Cave?
I don't have anything other than the continued save the date of the CAPS Conference in November. November 18th and 19th. But nothing else to add.
Sarah Beth, anything? Okay, great. We're up to 3F on the agenda. Upcoming meeting presentations, June's Board of Education meeting will include a presentation on professional development and evaluation, as well as celebration of Beecher Road Schools 2021-2022. Is there, if there's anything specific board members would like to see addressed in either of these presentations, I'd like you to just please reach out to Jonathan or to me, and we'll make sure it's included. For the public that's watching, the June meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Monday, June 20th at 7:00 PM. The Facilities Committee meeting will meet on Tuesday, June 7th at 7:30 AM. The Finance Committee is scheduled to meet on June 14th at 4:30 PM. But there'll be one prior to that that will be posted in Board Book. And as Maria just mentioned, the Policy Committee will be meeting that same day, Tuesday, June 14th, at 7:00 PM. So that's the end of our public service announcements. And we're up to Dr. Bud again, Ratify CSEA Contract.
Board members, you have a copy of the Redline revision to the CSEA Collective Bargaining Agreement. This agreement has been renegotiated through the Connecticut Municipal Employees Relations Act, MIRA, because the current agreement expires on June 30th. And I have to say that it is a continuing pleasure to work with paraeducators. I want to note that the language of the unit is changing to adoption of this agreement from para-professional to paraeducator. And that reflects a statewide change in general of the language used for these really, really valuable employees. And so actually, you see that change throughout the contract. We don't often change the name of the employee group. But in this case, they are changing the title of their group. It's a pleasure to work with both their, with certainly their state leader. But they have a very strong, and I mean that in a very good way, group here at Beecher Road School. And that includes the leadership of the union and their president, Sherry Foldy, who has really negotiated under some complex situations here. You see on the cover sheet that we've provided the key details. A general wage increase each year of the contract on most columns, 3% in year one, 2.5% years two and three. An increase of the medical insurance premium share in year two and three of the contract by half percent each. A decrease of the differential that is used by paraeducators who have spouses or family members on the planet. A decrease of that differential from 30% to 25%. I've mentioned that the group and the employees will be re-titled paraeducators. The group has had a sick leave bank that worked well, when it worked well. But both sides have collaboratively agreed to dissolve the sick leave bank at the end of this agreement to redistribute those days, along with some other changes to the language around sick leave and a variety of other changes you see to improve operational efficiency and communication. The board has discussed the agreement in draft form. The group has ratified the contract. So your vote tonight would make this the effective contract July 1st for the next three years. And I strongly support it with, again, great, great kudos to their group leaders for working hard on a kind of complex set of contractual changes.
Thank you, Dr. Bud. I would like to echo your comments about their valuable contribution to our school. They are certainly an integral part of our instructional program. And so I love that they are now re-titled paraeducators because indeed they are part of the education here at Beecher Road School. Such an important part as well, so. And I'm going to move that we approve the draft agreement between the Woodbridge Board of Education and the Woodbridge Paraeducators Association, CSEA, SEIU Local 2001, effective July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025. Do I have a second? Maria? Is there any discussion or questions for Dr. Bud? Go ahead, Jay.
So I believe the increases that are shown here on wages are in line with comparable districts. Though I think going forward, we need to maybe look at the last part of this contract, and that's on longevity payments. So at the moment, I think this is a fair agreement, and I will definitely support this agreement. But I think going forward, there's something that's being abandoned everywhere. It's the longevity payment. So even at universities now, they only paying for 25 and 30 years, I think, of service. We have a five-year payment. And I think five years longevity service is actually pretty short. So we may want to look at that going forward to see how we can streamline that. And so to give you an example, I've just done 20 years. And I was given a couple of hundred dollars in the plaque for that one single year. That was pretty generous, is what I hear. So I think that's one area that we may want to take a look at going forward. That was only my point, but I think this is a good contract in some instances.
Thanks, Jay. Anyone else? All right, since this is contract ratification, I'm going to call the roll. Am I finding that paper? Maria?
Yes, yes.
Sarah Beth?
Jay?
Brooke?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Aaron? And I vote yes, it's unanimous. And thank you again to Mrs. Foldy and to her group for working with us in such a collaborative way in terms of negotiations. Okay, we're now moving on to adopt flexibilities for implementing the Connecticut Guidelines for Educator Evaluation. Dr. Bud?
I think all of you were here last year at about this time, or actually early in the fall, when we came to with the exact same item, but it was for this school year. So essentially, this relates to how our certified teachers and administrators are evaluated. And the state has, in general, lots of requirements for evaluation plans. And when the, when COVID-19 happened going into this school year, and they offered districts the option of adopting flexibilities. Now, flexibilities are not really flexible. You can have the flexibilities in their totality, or you can have the option that was approved by the state several years ago. So I wouldn't want anyone to get the impression there's just tons of flexibility. The flexibilities, there are not. But the administrative team had come to, again, at the beginning of this year, and had said that it seemed like a good idea to adopt the flexibilities. And what you see is, on the cover sheet here, the flexibilities include, for say Bullet 1, that teachers can have goal-focused areas on topics that are really key in this pandemic time. Social and emotional learning is one. Engaging families is another. Another cultural responsiveness is another. In addition, there is a relaxation to some degree of what are called formal classroom observations and more of an emphasis on informal classroom observations. And for our purposes, we could say the difference is slightly more frequent, but a little bit less in duration of classroom visits for our teachers who are tenured. So the administration and the teachers have participated in using these flexibilities this year because that's exactly what you allowed us to do. They have worked well from both perspectives. Members of the Professional Development and Evaluation Committee. The administrative team and the WEA have met together. And we support the flexibilities being adopted into next year as well. And actually, adopting it now, and this is the state's kind of, excuse me, the state's kind of purpose for doing it at the moment, is that as teachers and administrators have their final goal conferences, or final conferences of the year in June, they can be talking with their supervisors, knowing what the areas of focus are for the next year, and start planning versus coming back in September and being a little discombobulated. So from all those groups I mentioned, there's unanimous support for So from all those groups I mentioned, there's unanimous support for your adoption of this for one more year. The final thing I will say is that the next year, this 2022-23 school year, the State Department is going to engage in a process to revise its total standards for educator evaluation. So from that perspective, sometime next year, the Board will be asked to develop an entirely new, well, at least new in some ways, evaluation plan for teachers and administrators. At the moment, what we're seeking to do is to, you know, for the last year under the current standards, have the flexibilities. So that's what I have for you tonight.
Thanks, Dr. Bud. Any questions or comments about what Dr. Bud just had to say? And I'm going to call for a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt the flexibilities for implementing the Connecticut Guidelines for Educator Evaluation 2017 for the 2022-2023 school year.
Do I have a second? Yes? Any gushing on the motion? All those in favor? If you can decide by raising your hand. It's unanimous.
Lynn, excuse me, was that Jay or Jeff who was the second?
Sorry, Marcia, I failed to unmute. I'm sorry. Motion made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Jeff Hughes. And the vote was unanimous. I'm sorry, Marcia.
No worries.
I did so good, Dr. Bud. Try again. Pick two.
Who is good at lip reading out in Webex land? What I was saying was, I do on this cover sheet share the bittersweet news of my resignation, and I have to ask the Board to move and adopt it. But I want to stress a few of the sentences in the cover sheet, which are that the district, and I speak about the administrators, the faculty, the support staff, the families, and the students have succeeded very strongly and continue to do so despite pandemic challenges that happen nearly every day. And that gives me an opportunity to stress the next sentence, which is that one cannot have a good school system without strong people. And I can speak very confidently about the strengths of our administrative team. Mr. Hewitt, who of course, has been interim for us this year, but has gone above and beyond in his duties. Excellent Beecher Road School principal, Annalisa Sherman. Excellent Assistant Principal, Jimmy Sapias. And excellent Director Special Services, Cheryl Kiesel. I can't possibly, I guess I could, but I won't name every teacher. I won't name every support staff member. I've named Sherry as a representative of the paraeducators. But I have to tell you that every single person in all of those groups is a very, very hard worker on behalf of the Woodbridge School District. We're lucky to have them here. The families that work for our system, that work for our system, the families who send their children to school here every day and trust us with really impressionable young children. And we thank them for that. And finally, as I say here, I will miss the real joy of seeing children who love learning each and every day at Beecher Road School. I have to ask you to approve this effective June 30th, 2022, but through June 17th. Here, I look very much forward to seeing those children each and every day, because they are the future. And I am very, very pleased that in my next to last meeting here, you have allowed the strategic plan that will take us into the next five years. It's a pleasure to work with you, and we'll continue to work together the next six weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bud. Motion? Go ahead, Maria.
I move that we accept the administrative resignation of Dr. Jonathan Bud, effective June 30th, 2022, with regret.
And do I have a second? Jeff? So I have a motion to accept the resignation, administrative resignation of Dr. Jonathan Bud, made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Jeff Hughes. All those in favor? Or is there any discussion? I'm sorry, I missed that part. All those in favor? And that would be a unanimous vote, Marcia. Dr. Bud, you're going to be here for a while, so there'll be an opportunity at our next board meeting for us to wish you well in your new endeavor, and thank you for your contributions to our school. But tonight, I will leave it at, we thank you very much for the things you have brought to this district. And so the next thing on the agenda is the appointment of the interim superintendent. So I have a little report, and then I'll ask for a motion. Christine Syriak has held a variety of school leadership roles during her more than 20 years of experience as an educational leader. She served as superintendent of the Seymour Public School District from 2012 to 2017. Following her retirement, Christine served as interim superintendent in Region 14 Public Schools. And most recently, Christine jumped in to serve as the interim superintendent of the Woodbridge Public School District from August 2020 to December 2020. Christine brings a wealth of experience, including in-depth knowledge of educational trends and instructional practice. The Beecher community quickly discovered that Christine's leadership skills are exemplary. She led our school district through the difficult transition of reopening the building following being fully remote, and she did it with a calm presence and a steadfast demeanor. After serving as an educator in Woodbridge for 36 years, followed by six years as a Board of Education member, I personally have been able to develop a deep understanding for the depth of knowledge and skills required of school district leaders. I have observed the necessary temperament, skills, and approach that is necessary in developing trust and confidence with all stakeholders. And I can assure you, Board members, that Christine Syriak possesses these attributes. She is a true professional, hardworking, honest, humble, confident, and intelligent with an uncompromising moral compass. She has proven that she can successfully bridge a district through leadership changes as she carried out the many duties of a superintendent during a most challenging period of time. So this evening, I am delighted to move that we appoint Christine Syriak as interim superintendent, effective July 1st, 2022. Do I have a second? Sarah Beth? Motion made by Lynn Piazek, seconded by Sarah Beth Delprey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? And it's a unanimous vote. Now, I noticed that Christine is on screen tonight. Where are you, Christine? There you are. I see you now. And I welcome you.
Thank you.
Back to Beecher Road School in a virtual way, right now, which you were very used to when you were here before. I don't know if you have words. I know I'm sitting on the spot and tell you that I'd be calling on you. But you're here, and we're happy to have you here. So if you have anything you'd like to say, we'd love to hear from you.
Well, hello, everyone. And Lynn, thank you for your very, very kind words. And what I am looking forward to is attending Board of Education meetings in person and not virtual, which will be very different than when I was interim in the past. So I'm really looking forward to that opportunity. I just want to say that I'm really honored that you want me to return to Woodbridge and Beecher this summer as the interim superintendent. I look forward to once again, working with the students, the staff, the teachers, the administration, the parents, all the town leaders, and the Board of Education. I want to thank the Board of Education for offering me this opportunity to once again assist during a time of transition. It's my hope that my previous tenure as the interim superintendent in Woodbridge will help ease the transition for everyone while the Board of Ed searches for a new superintendent. So again, I thank you. I look forward to joining you this summer, and just thank you.
Thank you, Christine. We look forward to seeing you in person, for sure. And thanks for jumping on tonight.
You're welcome.
4E on the agenda is appointment of the Superintendent Search Committee. I'll move that the Board appoint itself as the search committee to conduct the search for a new superintendent. Maria seconded that motion. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor? It's unanimous, Marcia. Our work begins. Thank you. We're moving on to 5A, Public Comment. Is there any public comment? Please raise your hand. Everyone is so much faster at scrolling than I am. I don't see anyone either. No public comment? Okay, the Board will enter into executive session in accordance with state statute for the purpose of discussions in regard to a matter which would result in the disclosure of records exempt from disclosure based on attorney-client privilege. For the public's information, it is expected that no action will be taken when the Board returns to public session following the executive session. May I have a motion to go into executive session inviting Dr. Jonathan Bud for a discussion in regard to a matter which would result in the disclosure of records exempt from disclosure based on attorney-client privilege?
So moved.
Maria Madonik, do I have a second? Sarah Beth? All those in favor? It's unanimous, Marcia. Thank you.